Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Hunt, call the August 4th Council Planning, Development and Environment Committee to order. The first item on our agenda will be public comments, and there are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation, and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. And we have two agenda items this evening. The first is ID 1156, Title 18, Zoning and Development Standards, and the second is ID 1224, Title 18, Land Use Code Futures, Future Updates List, or Whiteboard. So, at this time, members of the public may address council, either in person or virtually, although I will note that there is no one in council chambers to make comments in person. And those who are signed up in advance will make comments first. If you are joining virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand, and I'll check in with the city clerk. Is there anyone on the line that will be making virtual comments this evening for public comment?
Yes, Chair Hunt. Kim Lee is attending virtually and has indicated that she would like to address the committee.
Okay. In that case, then I'll continue reading the directions for providing public comments. So if you are joining us virtually and would like to make public comment, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three, and if you have joined by computer or smartphone, please look for the hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them very seriously and factor them into the decisions we make, and please do direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone. Please state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please speak clearly and pause frequently, and please limit comments to five minutes. And if you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, the meeting will need to proceed. So with that, I'll check in with the city clerk to call the first person up for a public comment.
Ms. Lee, I've made you a panelist. You can now unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good evening. My name is Kim Lee, 23266 Southeast 53rd. I'm an Issaquah resident and Director of Real Estate Development at Lakeside Industries. Lakeside Industries is very interested in the city's transfer development rights program and coinciding code provisions that are on the agenda today. As you may know, Lakeside is currently working with city staff to implement the Lakeside-Hillside Village Development Agreement. That agreement requires Lakeside to use TDRs to realize the maximum density authorized by the agreement and approved by the city council. We've already provided comments to the staff about the TDR ordinance and are collaborating with staff on ways to make the TDR program well. We look forward to working with the city to achieve our shared vision of a successful implementation of this development agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City clerk, has anyone else indicated a desire to speak?
Chair Hunt, there is no one else virtually attending at the moment.
Okay. Thank you very much. And as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. With that, we will move into approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve today, and the first one is from June 28th, from this committee meeting that occurred on June 28th, and the second one is from the July 7th meeting. I did want to ask my fellow committee members, Council President Walsh and Councilmember Ray, if they have, if you have any comments on those before we go ahead and approve them. Okay. I do have two quick comments. The first one is on the June 28th meeting minutes. That, I realize there was a quick turnaround, but that's, those items on the minutes have already gone to the full council and have been approved. So in the future, if we could have those at the meeting before, just in case to check if we wanted to add anything or clarify anything in those so that they could be more useful to council, that timing would be great. And then my other comment is on the July 7th meeting, there were two comments that I thought could be clarified, probably just a few words added, but one, there's a note that we talked about adding single-family zone for a topic of discussion, and my understanding is that that was part of the discussion around cities that have stopped using that zoning and allowed other kinds of housing within that zone, multi-family housing and missing middle housing. And so I thought we should clarify what that meant because right now it just says add single-family zone as a topic. And then the other one was that I thought you could, the intent could be clarified was about should there be a higher bar for goals in the white bar, in the whiteboard discussion? And I think to clarify that for, for council and for those, reading those minutes, that's regarding the outcomes, goals and outcomes chart, and that we felt if it's, if it's a action item that would be directly addressing one of the items on that goals and outcomes chart, we felt there should be a higher bar for that becoming a whiteboard item. So I thought that should also be clarified because it involves multiple charts and processes and was a little unclear the way it was written. Does that, was that clear for those two minute, notes in the minutes? Okay. Great. Thank you.
We can make those changes.
Okay. Wonderful. Then with that, I will make, I will move to approve the minutes as they appear in our evening's agenda. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Chair Hunt, did you mean to state that the minutes would be approved as amended?
Yes. Yes. Apologies. Should I go ahead and make that change, or?
I think as long as we note that that was the intent of the motion that, and I see other nods from the committee members, so I think we're good.
Great. Yes. Thank you. Thank you for catching that. Okay. Then with that, we will move to the first agenda item today, which is ID 1156, Title 18, Zoning and Development Standards. It's in this will be presented by Director Dolly Wall of Community Planning and Development.
I'm going to quickly share my screen. Can you see it okay? All right. So tonight, we're talking about topic number five out of six. So we've divided the whole land use code into six. We're at topic number five. We're calling it development standards, but it's really a few. We'll get into what's included in this, and we're hoping for direction to see if we, you know, these, for these particular topics, if we've met the goals and outcomes intended for this topic, or if there are any additional topics you want us to go back to Planning and Policy Commission to reevaluate. We've also added another policy question here, specific to transfer of development rights, and it relates to, we had an interlocal agreement with King County and whether we should renew it, extend it, start a new one, and then also should the city all explore, we'll get into the specifics of what this is, but it's landscape, L-clip program. So those are the three larger questions we're asking for direction. For this bucket number five, there are a few goals from the goals and outcomes chart that we've evaluated these against. You know, protect the forested hillsides, adequate parking while using the land efficiently, increasing housing diversity, effective management of travel in line with non-motorized and transit and climate goals, and then also the overarching modernize the code and incorporate best practices. The four subtopics in this larger topic are affordable housing, transfer of development rights, landmarks, and archaeological resources, and parking. So I'm going to present the first three, and Stephen Padua, Long Range Planning Manager, is going to take over the parking. He's been going to all the affinity group meetings on parking and can get into the details of that. So first off, affordable housing. You know, we started this conversation with the community and with the Planning and Policy Commission, really at a very basic level. What is it? And, you know, what is regulated and non-regulated? So just a very short summary, affordable housing for the purposes of this chapter in Title 18 is housing that has covenants attached to it to remain affordable for a certain amount of time or for perpetuity. And the income levels range from 30% of King County's area-wide median income to 80%. In our, in our city, in Issaquah, we allow covenants up to 120% of AMI, but those don't count towards our required affordable housing under the King County. So very basic things about what is affordable housing, and the programs that we currently have include this list. We have inclusionary zoning. It's limited to certain parts of Central Issaquah. We do allow cluster housing. We have fee waivers for affordable housing. We have priority permit review. We also allow reduction in parking spaces. We have multifamily tax exemption for, it's a pilot project for the TOD project only. And of course, the most of the, you know, real affordable housing we've gotten through is through the use of development agreements. We also have a Central Issaquah density bonus program. And what it is, is, you know, we've adopted this in 2013. It's an incentive. It's voluntary. We don't require it. It's only in the subarea for Central Issaquah where we allow additional development capacity. So one-third of the floor area ratio over this base, two-thirds over the base for onsite affordable units or fee in lieu of. What that has resulted for the city, you know, we have 11 units at 50% AMI and 650,000 fee in lieu of. So it hasn't been used that much, but primarily because the development in Central Issaquah hasn't been that, that much. The mandatory programs, of course, the inclusionary zoning in those three zones, cluster housing and development agreement. So we started the conversation with Planning and Policy Commission, asking whether we should keep the density bonus program because it hadn't reached too much success, or should we eliminate it and just require mandatory. We had Arch representative do a presentation to Planning and Policy Commission, which was well-liked by the Planning and Policy Commission and community members, and they wanted more of that, which we are going to plan for. But, and, and the information shared at that time was, you know, if you go down the path of mandatory affordable housing, and what our peer cities have done is they've coupled it up with some incentives such as multifamily tax exemption. The other question we asked Planning and Policy Commission at the time was, do you, you know, should the city institute more affordable housing programs, mandatory or, and where? You know, Planning and Policy Commission wanted to explore inclusionary zoning beyond the three zones. So we've, we've considered this on PPC's work plan for 2023 with the $100,000 grant that we received from Department of Commerce called, in short, the Happy Grant, but it's Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant. And with that grant, we're studying the three strategies that the city has adopted through their housing strategies plan. Number six, which is really to evaluate potential for inclusionary zoning outside of Central Issaquah. So we'll be looking at that. Strategy seven is to mitigate and offset the deterrence for condo construction. You know, the, what we'd heard was the state's warranty provisions are the biggest deterrent. So in 2019, that was, those provisions of the state law were loosened, but we haven't seen a big demand so far. So it's important for us to understand how, if, if we want diversity of housing and important homeownership program, how do we, what's at play here and how do we, you know, is there anything in our code that we can do to mitigate or offset those deterrence? And then lastly, how do we increase the potential diversity of housing types? And so we'll be studying all of this as part of this Happy Grant implementation program. However, we've done some work with this affordable housing, chapter in Title 18. We worked with Arch, and we're updating the code to match some of the other cities and some of the cleanup that has occurred. The second item that we've listed here, you know, there was some confusion, and we've sorted it out. We changed this in 2013. We, the code, Issaquah code used to have a 30-year cap of rental affordability, that that was what the covenant term limit was. It's no longer in play, and that's consistent with what other cities have that participate in Arch. And I think some of the comments we received was, is it going to deter the banks from lending money, and as a result, we won't get any affordable housing? But that's not the case because we've already kind of implemented this change. And we've confirmed with Arch that that is not the case. It may have been in the past, but no longer at play. The other thing we've codified is that the affordable units need to look and fill in appearances, appliances, interior, exterior appearances, similar to regular housing. So that's been codified now. We also had a provision where affordable housing didn't have to provide a recreation space. We've taken that out. There wasn't any logic for having that distinction. This last bullet point is we have these, you know, alternative compliance is what it's called, but you can have your, you can provide your affordable housing offsite. The code currently says within the same subarea, or you can pay payment in lieu of. There was a discussion at Planning and Policy Commission at one point about this. We have kept it and maintained it, but we're going to take a second look at it. Based on comments we received from Planning and Policy Commission, you know, we went back to Arch to ask, how, how is it working for other cities? Should we take it out? And I think the advice we've received from Arch is it's better to keep it in, however, we can, you know, based on that information, I think we'll, we'll tighten some of the language that it's at the city's discretion. The example we received where another peer city had used was there was a great affordable housing being proposed next to another residential development where getting that fee in lieu of was, was, made the sense for that particular city at the time. So if there is a similar scenario for Issaquah down the pipeline, we want to have that opportunity. But for most of the folks that have this requirement, we want to obviously have them build it at their site. So we'll clean up some of the language related to how that can play out.
Can I, can I ask a question on that? Because I, I did have a question just reading the material. So in the proposed changes, it says, in our packet, it says, "Option for payment in lieu as alternative compliance" was added. So this is an additional option, right?
I think the, the, the changes were that you're not subject to just the subarea, but you can go beyond your subarea because that was limiting. So my understanding is that we do currently have this in our provision. We loosened it to go outside the subarea.
Okay. But, so it is still loosening, we're allowing more options for payment in lieu?
Yeah. We're going to go back and relook at this. I think we, based on new feedback and Planning and Policy Commission's discussion, we want, we don't want to eliminate this option, but we only wanted to use it to the city's advantage where it does make sense, which in the particular scenario that Arch explained to us was where there was an actual affordable housing project being built, and it made sense to get the, the funding and to make that a reality because they were cobbling up their funding for that particular project. So we'll relook at it, but if the committee has any feedback on your thoughts about that, we want to hear from you as well.
Okay. I'll, I'll hold my feedback. I don't think I have questions, but Councilmember Ray.
Thanks. That was a nice tea. I had a question about what do we do with the, in lieu of fees? Where do those go? Do they, are they earmarked and targeted to affordable housing, or?
Yes.
And so how do we, how do we spend it? Do we give it to Arch, or what's, what's the, what's the mechanics of distributing that funding? City Administrator?
City Administrator, morning.
Councilmember Ray, members of the committee, good evening. There is an affordable housing fund. From time to time, there are allocations that are requested of the city council. There is no master plan, per se, to that. I think it's on a project-by-project basis.
Great. Thank you.
Should I keep going? So, so real high-level summary of public comments. The first one, just ignore that. We sorted it out. There was some confusion related to it. We heard that interspersing the affordable housing rather than putting it in one project has a positive effect. So whatever policies we come up with through the Happy Grant or whatever, that's a good piece of information. We got some questions about what happens when affordable rentals with covenants are converted into condominiums. So it does improve housing affordability from an ownership perspective, but do they stay affordable? So we asked Arch. We got some good feedback that there are mechanisms to kind of make sure, but we're going to codify some of that in our, in our code to ensure that you don't lose that affordability piece. There was also an expression about wanting to see 30% AMI included in the inclusionary zoning. So we'll have that policy discussion as we look at expanding the inclusionary zoning. And then the second one, you know, expand it to more than the three zones. We also received one comment about expanding multifamily tax exemption program to citywide. This is not one of the strategies that we're looking at. It's a little bit of an interplay with that. You know, so we'll, we'll consider it, but a more in-depth analysis for the multifamily tax exemption should probably go on the whiteboard, per se. It probably, you know, if there's a way to get what the city wants in the area we want, it could be a targeted sort of a multifamily tax exemption for what the city's policies are, perhaps not a blanket program. So there may be different options of how to, how to kind of address that, but that's not part of this Title 18 update. The, the other comments we heard was the calculation for payment in lieu are unclear, so we're going to try and see if we can make them more clear, maybe text amendments and working with Arch on that. And then I think there was a general desire to understand why the incentives are not working, you know, so. And then, of course, some of the comments we heard from PPC were diversity in affordable housing has been missing. Micro units, cottage housing, ADUs are all needed to address affordable housing needs. And then there was one comment about affordable housing covenant should be recorded at occupancy rather than at building permit issuance. There are some concerns with letting folks build without actually getting the covenants recorded, but we'll consider it and, and review that comment. And then, of course, onsite versus alternate compliance that we're going to reevaluate with the second draft. So that concludes the affordable housing piece. I can keep going to TDR or pause for discussion on that topic?
I think, I think this will be quick. So on the last slide, the second to last one was about the covenant recorded at occupancy. Can you just explain who would be in favor of that and why?
I think that particular comment came from Lakeside Industries, and it was, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, so we'll, we'll check in with them why that was preferred from their perspective. From the city's perspective, it's harder if you've given folks a building permit and it's already built and occupy, you know, we still have an occupancy, but it's not like a commercial occupancy, but we just didn't want to lose that comment, so we put it on the list here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ray.
I just want to actually pick up on one of the comments, which is, need to understand why the incentives are not working. I mean, it doesn't seem like we're, we're moving the needle with the, the programs that we have in place right now. Any, any insights into why that is, and I guess more importantly, what we can do and how we roll that into the, the code update to actually drive some behavior change?
Yeah. You know, I mean, ultimately, you know, the economics is at play for people to use the incentives or not use the incentives, the market demand, and the, and the fact that we haven't had residential in our Central Issaquah, that we designated it to be our growth center, all of those things, and that's where really our incentives are so far. So that's why expanding the inclusionary zoning to more than those three zones is the, is the studying we'll do with the grant, to see if that'll result in more, you know, just a requirement, but, but we'll need to understand the, the economics there, too. So the consultant we've selected is Eco Northwest. They, they do understand all the, you know, so we're hoping that we'll, we'll get to some of the underlying issues and our understanding of that.
Great. Thanks.
Council President Walsh.
Thanks. So I'll, I'll throw my hat in there, too. That was certainly something that came up for me as I was reading over the previous conversations on this. And so when we take a look at that and the cost-effectiveness of that, the other thing that came up for me was structured parking. Because right around the time that we added in structured parking as a requirement for the Central Issaquah area, it, it starts to look at potentially that concept of, oh, are we disincentivizing any housing in the Central Issaquah by adding costs for both inclusionary zoning and structured parking? So I'm hoping that when we come back to information on that, we can assess what those potential costs are and if they're shifting housing into the other areas.
Yeah. You know, the structured parking, a lot of affordable housing developers will tell you that the funding actually doesn't allow them to use that for structured parking because none of these funds want to pay for parking, they want to pay for units. So it's, it's a good point. At the same time, unless there's transit and, and how do you, you know, how do you get people moving in about, out and about? So it's, yeah. So we can add that to, to the list to study. Yep. Okay. Should we move on to TDR? So transfer of development rights. Again, we started the conversation with Planning and Policy Commission about what, what are they? You know, it basically allows increased development on one parcel, the receiving site, while protecting another site, sending site, and it's all at the owner's discretion. It's not you have to do it. It's just another incentive or a tool for folks to preserve their open space, for folks that think it's going to be too expensive for them to develop, to pass on their development rights to someone else. They're typically with, you know, lands that are encumbered with critical areas and/or utilities are extremely hard to get to and all that kind of stuff. So they can be bought and sold between public agencies. Certainly, the city has been part of these conversations in the past. They can be banked to preserve the land now and later TDR them. But in our code, that was last updated, I believe, in 2013 or something close to that, can be used to increase impervious surface height, floor area ratio, or density. And you can choose which one of those development rights is more of an incentive for you. So in our code, we have a map that shows the receiving sites in red, the sending sites in green. We, we have discovered that there is a disconnect between the text in our code and this map, which the text disallows properties that are zoned, community facilities, open space and such, to be designated as sending sites when most of our sending sites are that. So we'll be working to fix that. But what we've changed, the, the biggest change here is, you know, one of the goals of the goals and outcomes chart was to protect forested hillsides. So previously, we didn't have this requirement or this tool to be used for slopes that are, that lie between 20% and 39%. So the city already prohibits development over 40% of slopes, but anything below that but is steep, you can, you know, add, add this, and you can go through a process to designate your site as a sending site. a process to designate your site as a sending site to protect your property from development, but actually get something in exchange by giving your development rights to another property. We've moved the density calculations to this chapter. So when we did the critical areas code update, we took out, and, you know, we had incentivized more density for properties that had critical areas. It wasn't a significant amount. It was a complicated solution, but it was only for residential properties. So none of that made sense. So we had removed that. However, we kept it in the TDR, and the reason is, you know, it's more of an incentive for someone to do a TDR, to get, to transfer your development rights than to actually do the development on your property. So it's another nuance in the TDR program that if you were to do the development, you get 10 homes. If you transfer your development, you get 11 homes. So you're, you know, so there's a little bit of an incentive built into that. We've changed the level of review for addition and removal of sending in sites, so it'll still require council approval to add or remove, you know, these sites, sending and receiving. And we can get into the procedures of what that makes sense or not. And then we've codified some of the bank activities, expenditures, and authorizations. So it was a little bit unclear about the bank, the city's bank authority and things of that nature. And the one thing that we're asking council's feedback on is we had this interlocal with King County that allowed some of the sending sites along Isiqua Creek Basin to be transferred their development rights for additional development capacity within the city. It was entered in 2007. It expired in 2014. So the question is, should the city extend this, renew it, enter into a new one? And then I think we also learned that there is also this King County's Landscape Conservation and Local Infrastructure Program, for short, we'll call it LCLIP, where the city retains a portion of the county's share of property taxes for new construction for 25 years. And we can use it to spend on public improvements, parks, trails, streetscapes, utilities. So this is a graphic version of explaining what the LCLIP program is. So if, without the transfer of additional development capacity, our base assessed value is that blue line. And if, as new development gets, you know, capacity happens and we get more development, the 10 is how your, you know, your increased property taxes. But in here, you know, obviously, the city's share of taxes will increase, but the city's also allowed to keep up to 75% of the county's new taxes. So this little sliver, this blue sliver on the right-hand corner, stays with the city for 25 years to fund infrastructure. So, you know, our thought process in this was if we are going to do an interlocal, perhaps bundling it up with LCLIP makes sense for the city. So the LCLIP can only be used for transfer of development rights if there's an interlocal with King County, for only the portions that's transferred from the county into the city. And there's a whole feasibility study that has to be done that establishes some of this stuff. We've had meetings with the King County TDR program and Forterra and our finance department to kind of understand some of the basics of this. But we're asking council whether we should renew that interlocal, whether we, you know, if so, then should we consider LCLIP as another program?
Okay. Question from Councilmember Ray?
Okay, that's really complex. Can we, let me play back what I think I heard. So if we do a TDR program and using LCLIP and this interlocal agreement, and we build additional housing units within the city that were originally allocated out someplace in the county, in the Isiqua Creek Basin, let's just say, then we, of course, get our property tax increment, but then there's also some part of what the county would take their share of our property, that residence property tax that we'll get for our purposes. I just won't even define what purposes those might be.
Yeah.
Are there any restrictions on what we can use that money for?
It is my understanding, yes. So we could use it for infrastructure, you know, but that's a broad spectrum of things within infrastructure that we can use it for.
Do you know how much of it is? Is it some whole percentage, some fraction of a percent?
The dollar amount?
Well, you know, the, so, you know, there's a certain amount of property tax we get, works out to, I think, about 10%. So county gets their chunk of it. How much of their chunk do we get? Do you know?
Of the total additional that they would make, get, we would get 75% of that.
Okay.
So in this pie chart, it kind of shows the low, you know, on the right-hand side, if you see the local taxing disc, you know, that would be ours, and then that orange part would be our new tax. The county's, which is this more deeper brown or rust-colored, the blue piece of that would remain to the city of the outer slice of that pie, this, where that arrow is pointing. And then the 25% county would still keep that.
Okay, great. That was helpful, thanks.
I had a question about the previous interlocal agreement. Previously, we weren't entered into the LCLIP program, and so I, and there were sending, or, yes, sending sites in the county, and they would send to receiving sites in the city of Isiqua. And so I'm wondering, in that previous agreement, what was the benefit to the city? I imagine the benefit to the county is that they're preserving those forested lands and working farms and things like that. And so then, without this program, what would be the benefit to the city?
Yeah, you know, it was limited to the Isiqua Creek Basin, so we'll need to look at the legislative history of what the pros and cons were discussed at that time, but it wasn't like anywhere in the county. It was more in proximity to Isiqua, and there must be for a period, you know, for some ecological gain that the county felt, the city leadership at that time felt it was, you know, okay to participate in that.
Yeah, so it was just sort of mutual benefit of improving the creek, although it wasn't the creek within the city, probably.
Correct, correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, but, you know, if, the other conversation we've had with King County is if the policy is to incentivize preservation of sending sites within the city limits, the interlocal can be structured where the TDR transfer is at a smaller ratio. So if you transfer from outside the county, outside the city limits, you get half that value as opposed to you get. So there's still an incentive for preserving open space within the city, and that's how Seattle is set up.
Okay, good to know, thank you. Council President Walsh?
Thank you. So would the receiving sites for this LCLIP be the same as the receiving sites that we've determined for our TDR program?
Yeah, I mean, whichever we want to designate receiving sites, it's up to council. And, but the sending sites would be from outside the limits.
Yeah. And then I know there's this other question about, do we have enough potential sending and receiving sites within the city to meet our needs? Would establishing any of this LCLIP program potentially hinder or help that? Is there any relationship there?
You know, LCLIP is successful if there's demand, is what we understand. So if there's demand to purchase TDRs, then somebody will actually use it, and therefore the, you know, you'll get the development and then there's, so it's another tool. It, you know, if it doesn't, if nobody uses it, then the city spends the time instituting the TDR and stuff like that, but it, there's no harm, per se, in that. If it gets used, then you get to keep the revenue. It all depends on private marketplace and the demand for receiving property owners to want to, you know, purchase the TDRs or not.
So, but my question was related to Lakeside Industries has brought up this concept of, are there enough TDR? And I can't remember whether it's receiving sites or sending sites to fill out their development agreement.
Yeah.
Does this impact that?
Well, the interlocal agreement would, you know, would be beneficial to Lakeside because the development agreement with Lakeside is that they can purchase 100 TDRs from the city at a fixed price. And these are CIPA-mitigated TDRs, so they paid their mitigation fees in 2013 and all that kind of stuff. You know, we won't get into the specifics of theirs, but they, but in addition, they have 400 additional TDRs that they can get on the private marketplace. It's clear that the city doesn't have those at this point, that we can just hand out to them. In talking with King County, even when this Isiqua Creek Basin, it'll be, they don't, that won't add to 400 either. So the, from a demand perspective, yes, the Lakeside Industries has a need, or, you know, they're looking for 400 because that's what the development agreement said that they could get that much.
Okay, thanks. Just wanted to make sure it wasn't going in the other direction.
Councilmember Ray?
So this is really interesting because it's driven by market forces on both the buy and the sell side. So just looking back over the last couple of years, what have we seen in the marketplace for TDRs? Are they, are there much demand? Is there much supply? How's that balance look?
Yeah, you know, we're trying to piece all that information, but from our research so far, there was a, you know, receiving sites back in 2007, 2008, then some activity, you know, in 2018 or something like that. But the WashDOT TDR, you know, that development agreement, the Highlands with the Park Point, the Talis with preserving the open space and, you know, through the development agreement. So it's been used much more than any other cities in the region, per se, than Isiqua was at the forefront back then. But it, you know, that was another one of the questions Councilmember Hunt had asked was to, the changes that we're making, is it going to make it more useful? Again, it depends on the more demand on the receiving site. If you have a base development capacity and you can build that without purchasing the development rights, and then you layer it with, where you can purchase additional, but you're going to actually gain more, is it beneficial for you? So it's hard to tell at this point whether the market forces are, you know, tipping in their favor or not. But clearly, for us, for Lakeside itself, is going to use up a lot of TDRs, yeah.
Quick follow-on. Since this is market-driven, is the price of TDRs driven by market forces or is it fixed?
It is driven by market forces. King County has a program of how they establish that. We have in our code baked in how we determine how many TDR units per density and all that kind of calculation that will occur. But then it's market-driven.
Thank you, fascinating.
So I had emailed in a similar question, but I think my question was more about also I, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that there have been uses of this in development agreements and sort of large instances where it was used quite a bit, but then in between those development agreements or those instances, it hasn't really been used by, you know, an owner of an individual parcel, for example, those smaller uses of it. And so that's, that's my understanding, and then I just wondered if that was true because I couldn't, and it might be there, but I didn't see the information. And I think with, without that information, it's hard for me to know how successful or how frequently this program has been used and how does that, although it was good to hear that it's used more than other cities, so relative to other cities, it's being used more than others. But, you know, how would this change that and what's the current status was a little bit hard for me to parse.
Yeah, I mean, we are trying to get a handle on the previous, here's one, you know, it's not holistic and complete, but this was our, looking at how many receiving sites and how many TDRs were purchased. So, you know, WashDOT TDR at the Bellev College, you know, they purchased 200. Polygon Westridge was 100 units. So beyond those larger ones, there were some of these. And then, of course, Lakeside has 100 from us at a fixed rate cost, and then another 400 from the private marketplace. So we can create a report and share that with you for the next iteration, if that's going to be helpful or useful. But I think what you were asking was, are we making any changes so that this is used more? Yeah, yeah. So, you know, because it's market-driven, it's a little bit, it's a tool. It's not that we can, we can really say you have to do it. It's an optional.
Okay, thank you.
So really, the main public comments were the conflict between the map and the designation, which we're going to fix. We're asking about the interlocal. And then I think we heard from Lakeside, it's clear that nowhere 400 TDRs are currently available. Define transit stop, so there was some cleanup needed for definitions. And then I think there was some confusion about the contents of the TDR certificate, perhaps even defining a development right, because it could be the three or four things. And then I think our code says we can use TDR funds for administration, because it is complex, you know, to understand and implement and do all of these things. So one of the planning commissioners said if that, if those funds, they haven't been used so far, but if they are used, they should be tracked. And there was a general inclination that those should remain for preservation of open space rather than for administration. That's what we heard through the public process.
Okay, I think you can continue on.
Okay.
Thanks.
So the next one is really this landmark and archaeological resources. We have a section entitled 18. It encourages the protection, preservation, and enhancement. There's a landmarks commission, a nomination process, a designation criteria.
I'm sorry, could we get it in the presentation mode so we can see it a little bigger? Thank you so much.
So this, you know, the city contracts, has an interlocal with King County for assistance on historic preservation, and I think council recently updated that interlocal. So King County Landmark and Heritage Commission has nine members. There is one representative from Isiqua. So someone can submit a nomination, it's reviewed for completeness, the commission reviews the nomination and then gives them a decision. And what we're doing with this code update is instead of, you know, hard baking the King County's code into our code, we're referencing it. So as it changes over time, we don't have to come back and change our code. But there is a collaboration that King County, whenever they change their code, they would send us, you know, they would participate, and we would get an opportunity to comment on it. So far, there've been six properties that have been received nomination, and I think it's, there's a seventh one. The big picture was the most recent nomination that happened that's not on this list. And so we've added a fee recovery section. It's really only if the fees are more than $750. We've adopted King County's code by reference. We've added a landmark commission section, so it's clear about the Isiqua's special member position in there. And we've aligned with the interlocal language, where we've said the city's building official will consider the county's historic preservation's comments. We recently updated our violation section, so we've changed that reference. So the public comments we received from Planning Commission and others were, when we codified the section for Isiqua's specific member position, why do we have a term limit of three years? You know, there was a concern that maybe we won't find people that are, you know, volunteering to do this, and it's special, and how would you train them, and then you lose them after three years. So we'll take a look at it to see where that came from and if we can say, or, you know, three years or more, you know, have some flexibility. Then, and then someone asked why there are only six properties that are Then, and then someone asked why there are only six properties that are designated. Again, it's up to the property owner to file for a nomination. And then I think there was a, there was a question about if King County changes the code and we adopt it by reference, how will we ensure that there are no concerns for the city? So that happens in a collaborative process where we comment on King County's code. That's pretty much it. That was very short and, you know, cleanup for that chapter. Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen to talk about parking.
Good evening, committee members. I'm Stephen Padua, Long Range Planning Manager. I'm going to kind of conclude the presentation about parking. So as Minnie mentioned earlier in the presentation, parking in particular moves towards modernizing the code and incorporating best practices for what we want to do with our regulations. It provides adequate parking while utilizing land efficiently. It helps support the diversification of housing and it helps with managing travel when it results from new development. The changes we made, for these first three changes, it's consistent with a lot of the changes we made with other draft sections of the code. We reduced redundancies, consolidated many sections of code that came from multiple documents. We adapted and, and added more context to the intent sections for parking to help explain what we were trying to achieve and then replaced a lot of the must, should with musts so that we're adding more enforceability with our regulations. When it comes to the off-street parking requirements, we had several discussions with the affinity groups and well with the Development Commission and the Planning Policy Commission to talk about what we want to do with off-street parking, especially as it applies with Central Isguac and more of the surrounding neighborhoods. And what we concluded from the recommendations from the commissions and the affinity members was we wanted to provide more predictable metrics, move away from metrics like using the number of employees for development, which is really extremely hard to predict at that early of the stage. And we're moving towards metrics related to square footage of a building, something out of the ITE generation manual. While not many of the affinity groups agreed with using square footage for a lot of them, for a lot of the land use, they did agree using ITE as kind of a general basis with the hope that the city would continue discussions about off-street parking. And then for the consolidation of parking requirements, this was primarily to recognize that Central Isguac and the areas around Central Isguac have different land uses. And we want to be able to establish a tier system to show that the parking regulations are different for the two tiers. And then for these last three changes, it was, it came from discussions from the Planning Policy Commission around bike parking, shared parking and electric vehicles and really trying to clarify what the regulations are while also push, kind of pushing the needle of what the city plans were calling for when it related to bike parking and actually encouraging bicycle use as part of a transportation system, as well as making shared parking more of a usable, flexible parking option. And then when it came to the EV parking regulations, it was moving towards a lot of the implementation of the ICAP action items. And so we increased some of those regulations, which is a little more significant than we did with other sections of the code. So we added a slide to, to clarify some of that just because of, it was a little big of a change compared to the other sections of the draft code. So we added new townhomes to the table to be 100% EV ready. And for clarification, EV ready is the electrical infrastructure that goes in the ground or in the walls. And then EVSE, which I'll mention a little bit later, is the electrical infrastructure plus the equipment hookup that connects to the vehicles. Next, we changed the new multifamily and increased it from 30 to 50%, and did the same for existing multifamily, increased it from 20 to 40%. And then for non-residential, we increased EV ready to, from 10 to 25% and then EVSE from 5 to 10%. And that was in line, in consultation with our sustainability staff as, to look at what we were trying to achieve out of the ICAP. The Planning Policy Commission weighed in on a lot of the draft changes and we posed the questions on if the long-term and short-term bike parking was in line with their recommendations during the GAPS analysis phase of the project. We also asked the similar question on shared parking, on clarifying that as a flexible parking tool. As, and we asked if we need to reconsider the EV regulations and consider looking into increasing it further because that was part of the discussion we've had with the Planning Part, Planning Policy Commission and the Development Commission in the GAPS analysis phase. For public comments, we, we looked at a lot of the public comments and in particular the first one where we removed the parking requirement for ADUs. This was actually in response to a state requirement that went in to make sure that we eliminated any parking requirements related to ADUs. For the second item, we looked at and actually with the individual looked at the tier parking maps and it was, his concern was primarily related to where the transit services were that actually aren't in place yet. So that'll be something that we'll be reviewing at a future date once transit services change. The next item on off-street parking requirements and multifamily, this is something that's actually identified on the future updates list for us to take another look at to really evaluate what we want to achieve in central and the areas outside of central. The item on onsite loading space standards was actually a typo where that'll be recognized in the next draft. And then the integration of daylight and structured parking is something that I think Director Dollywall mentioned that we'll be taking a look, another look at the structured parking requirements. The electric cars for industry and trend, this is something that we've had discussions with Puget Sound Energy and their preferences, actually, we just continue to talk with them once new developments come in. They're not too concerned with one or two developments increasing with any of these rates. They've seen kind of the draft code and said, this is fine. But if, and then all of Central Isguac all of a sudden developed all at the same time, then there's a concern there. So they are actually monitoring all cities' regulations related to electric vehicles and they're developing their own plans to kind of update the infrastructure to kind of go along with it. For bike parking, we're also taking another look at bike parking to see where we might be able to clarify where the restrictions are and how to better meet what the best practices are for bike parking standards. And then for shared parking, staff is also looking into how to increase those opportunities. So before I go on to next steps, are there any questions?
Councilmember Murray?
Thanks. Going back to the proposed draft adds for the EV standards, the fourth bullet, non-residential buildings increase the EV ready requirement from 10 to 25. Is that new or is that a substantial remodel or both?
It's a substantial remodel.
Okay. So both of the, and then the EVSE from 5 to 10, that's also for a substantial remodel?
Correct.
That whole, that whole bullet point?
Yeah, so for non-residential, the, the rates for new and for existing substantial remodels increase the same.
Got it. It would be good to just call out the substantial remodel on that one. That would be helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So for next steps, City Council will review at the end of the year, at the end of the year after the Planning Policy Commission does a public hearing on the consolidated draft. And then there's a typo on the slide recognizing August, where it's really September, you'll see. The administration procedures, so the last topics for the Title 18 project. And that'll include procedures, definitions. Trying to remember all the.
CIPA.
No, CIPA.
Terrain management.
Yeah, forested hillside preservation and. Wireless communications. Thank you. So the direction, going back to the direction needed for tonight, we're asking if the proposed changes fully meet the goals and outcomes intended for the topic update. Are there additional topics the committee would like staff to consider for making final edits? And then should the city pursue extension of the expired interlocal agreement with King County regarding transferred development rights and explore the Lkip program?
Okay, great. Thank you. So, committee, we will now have some time for questions and then I'll call for public comments. If there's any members of the public wishing to comment on this item and then we can make our recommendation. Council, Council President Walsh?
Thank you. Stephen, you might as well stay up there. I've got questions about parking. So you mentioned how you were looking at using the gross floor area based on the IT manual instead of kind of some of our previous stuff related to commercial uses particularly that were often per employee, per classroom, all of that. How do we analyze whether the proposed is an increase or a decrease in parking requirements? And how do we understand what that recommendation is related to other cities? Are we proposing something that is more restrictive, like less parking required or more parking required? What is that?
So the IT manual actually provides a tool that recommends based on the city size and the demographics, what type of requirement should be used in line with any of the square footage. So for the city of Isguac, what was, what was put into the table is actually what was recommended for a city of our size and the type of development that we're looking for. The comparison with the other cities, or at least our peer cities, they all use different metrics. And so it's, it's a little difficult for us, I think, to compare to what they do. Some of them do use square footage, which we'd looked at and made sure that we were in line with what they were doing and, or were requiring for the off-street parking requirements. But if there was no consistent metric that we could use, then we use what was recommended by the IT manual.
Okay, so continuing on that concept, I just can't analyze this and figure out if this is getting us toward, what is that, goal two? And so I'm wondering whether the administration could provide us with a visual comparison of min and max parking, particularly for restaurants, school, retail and multifamily housing for some of our major current projects that are in tier one and in tier two so that we can understand, okay, take Target for example. If it's a certain number of gross floor area, the previous code required X many min-max parking spots and the proposed code requires so many. Because without that, I just don't, yeah. So is that something that we can consider within a timeline of doing this review?
Yes, yeah. So when the administration returns to the committee to kind of look at the consolidated draft, we'll, we'll return with a little more graphics and kind of show what this change actually represents.
Can I keep going? Okay. Bike parking, so really like the conversation that you had with PPC. It seems like they had a lot of input on that, which I think is great. But what I didn't hear in the staff report or presentation is whether this is also based on any other cities or how it differs from other cities. So again, I appreciate that we have some local input, particularly from people who are bike riders in the city. But I need to understand how, because that's a big change for us. I need to understand how that relates to what other cities in the area are doing. Do you have any idea of that now or is that something you're planning to bring back to us?
I actually can respond to that now. So we actually used the City of Kirkland and City Redmond's bike parking standards to put together what was proposed in the draft.
One more. Parking requirements related to residential housing. So I appreciated seeing that related to land use, but that got me thinking about number of bedrooms and how we might end up over providing parking for, I believe it was multifamily housing in tier two was 1.21 parking stalls per unit minimum. But if all of those were one bedroom or studios, that could potentially be overparked. So do any other cities use number of bedrooms for their decision points and is that something we considered?
It is something that staff is actually considering. We received a similar comment actually from the affinity group. So our staff is actually looking into it. I do know a few cities, not on the east side, do use those type of metrics or go into that level of detail, but not everybody. None of the other east side cities go into that level of detail when it comes to bike parking.
That wasn't related to bike parking. That was just regular parking in general. But, okay, I think that's all I had right now.
Okay, okay. I have a couple of questions. So one is on the Happy Grant. It seems like there's a lot of, a lot of different topics writing on that grant. And I wondered if the scope has increased or if you think that $100,000 is likely to actually cover those? Or if the scope just was always that scope, we just keep hearing about pieces that are going to be addressed by that grant?
No, I think when we applied for the grant, that was the scope, that we would study those three strategies. So, but now, of course, we're getting into the kickoff meetings and really deliverables. What are we going to get from the consultants? So, but the over, but our goal is to, to understand those three strategies. Yeah.
Okay, and, and do you still expect that the, the grant will cover the totality of that? Or do you expect there may need to be additional funding for those topics based on learning more and hearing the conversations at PPC thus far and our conversations, et cetera?
Yeah, so the, the grant will cover the deliverables from the consultant. So if the PPC or council wants more conversations, you know, that'll be covered by staff.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. So one other question I had is sort of similar to Council President Walsh, Walsh's questions, but the question was if we are, if there are cases where we're increasing the parking requirement based on making these changes, I think that would be good in particular to flag for our consideration because pretty. So I don't know if you, based on the answer to that question, I don't know if you know that yet or if you've done that comparison. No, okay. So that would be really helpful information because my concern, similar to Council President Walsh, I think, is about overparking and it is hard to know if we're exacerbating that with these changes because it's unclear, you know, it's kind of like apples to oranges methods. And so it's unclear if we're increasing parking requirements when we've, we've heard from a number of different sort of community members and community groups that there's very high parking standards. So, so that would be super helpful and it's, it's kind of hard to evaluate without that, I feel like. I think. One other sort of minor question, but on the ADUs, are we considering also a conversation on detached ADUs? I like. Do you know?
We already allow detached ADUs. So the last ADU update was to allow attached and detached.
Okay, is that for everywhere where we allow ADUs?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, okay, great.
This issue with the parking, we did require parking for ADUs. The state law was changed where we couldn't require parking, additional parking for ADUs. And so we've, we've fixed that, but we don't have a choice there. It's a state law requirement.
Okay, great. I think that, that's my question at this point. Any other? Okay. Then at this time, I will check in. That concludes our, our committee Q and A. And so I'll check in with the city clerk if there are any members of the public on the line and also note that we, we do not have any members of the public here in council chambers. of the public here in council chambers. Is anyone indicating, desire to speak on this topic at this time?
Yes, Chair Hunt, Kim Lee would like to address the committee on this topic.
Okay.
Ms. Lee, I am making you a panelist, you should be able to unmute and address the committee.
Everyone, again, thank you for allowing me to make one more just quick clarification comment about the TDRs. So, I just wanted to clarify that there are two separate decisions to be made with regard to the interlocal agreement. So, in my understanding, it's either, one, do we move forward with either amending or extending the expired agreement? And then the separate decision is if, you know, if council decides to move forward with a new agreement, do you consider the L-clip program? Not that those two decisions are coupled together. If you decide, and Mrs. Dolewalk can correct me, but as I understand it, if the L-clip program is a program that you wish to move forward with, then that precludes the ability to simply amend and extend the previously existing interlocal agreement.
Okay, thank you, thank you for those comments. And at this time, we will deliberate and potentially make a recommendation. I think it would probably be helpful to address the items in order, as we've done before, and then I'll sort of summarize what I've heard back, and we can take it from there. So, I believe the first item within this is TDR, right?
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing, okay. So, first, let's start off with affordable housing, then TDR, then parking? No, then landmark, yeah, and then parking, okay. All right, affordable housing, who would like to kick us off?
I'll go first. I think the changes around affordable housing are good. I continue to be concerned that the methods we're using have been less than effective in generating affordable housing, so I think anything that we can do now to make it clearer would be good. I think looking at expanding inclusionary zoning is good. I think expanding the multifamily tax exemption is good, and I think the Happy Grant, if it can give us some insights into how to actually move the needle on affordable housing, that would be very good.
Council President Walsh?
Plus one to what he said. Basically, I'm, I think it's really good that we're having the conversation about why we're not receiving affordable housing or any development really in that central Issaquah area, and really getting down into the details and understanding why not. I think we basically have two, well, there's probably more, but to my simplified mindset, it's either, hey, whatever we did didn't work, and we either need to roll back the regulations or add on extra incentives, or it incentivized things out of the central Issaquah area, and that thus we're getting development out in those areas, and so one of the other ways to handle that is to expand the requirements to the whole city. So, I look forward to getting the information on that analysis, but in lieu of that, I think the conversations that you had, and the changes made to affordable housing in the code are good adjustments, and so glad to see that area moving forward.
Thank you. I agree with my fellow committee members. I think, however, that not only are we not getting affordable housing to the degree we need it, the issues around folks being cost burdened and rents increasing, those, as far as I can tell, are also becoming worse and worse, so the problem is becoming worse while we're also not seeing affordable housing being built. And so, I think the grant, it's scoped, you know, to address these questions, but I guess I would really reiterate that we do need to have actions come out of that, you know, recommendations that we can act on. I think we generally know that we need more tools, and we need to see changes from the way, you know, the way we've been headed as far as an increasingly large portion of our community being so cost burdened for housing, or by housing costs. So, I think increasing the multifamily tax exemption, increasing inclusionary zoning to other areas, all of those things are things we will need to do, and then it's a question of how exactly, but I would hope to have that really solidified by this Happy Grant, so then we can take action within, I would hope, within that year, 2023. I think we can hopefully have not only the information, but also recommendations on how to act, that would be most useful. And then, let's see, what else did I have? Oh, one other comment, there were changes made to make the appliances, also the interior and exterior more similar to market rate for affordable units, as I understood it. I just want to make sure that that's not in any way decreasing the likelihood that we would have affordable housing. I think that the point that was made at PPC, I think, or it was made in the comments, about interspersing units in market rate with affordable housing, that's a really important concept, and I would like to see incentives, or, you know, would like to see driving toward that as a goal. But just a note of caution, if the appliances and things are adding to the cost, I would not want that to disincentivize building it, and I think at the end of the day, we, there's an underlying issue, which is that we're not seeing this being built, and that's the big problem, not really like the quality of the appliances necessarily. So, just, I know that's a balancing act, but I would just look at it through that lens, and then again, like interspersed with market rate and affordable housing, that's, that can be really important, and that also, then, those units are going to be very similar, just in their nature, and similar exterior, et cetera, to the market rate, which would be one way to do that, and I think has multiple benefits. So, those are my comments on affordable housing. Anything additional? Okay. So, to summarize, I think we're generally in support of using the Happy Grant to look at this more, but also just recognizing that we aren't getting the affordable housing that we need to see. And I think also, Council President Walsh had mentioned earlier, looking at parking as well, just coupled with, you know, what are all the cost drivers here? And then sort of my comment on the appliances is similar, like just considering all of the things that are making this costly that we could adjust to get more affordable housing would be, would be good, I think. Good summary, anything else? Okay. So, then we will move to TDRs. Any comments on TDRs? Council President Walsh?
Thanks. First of all, I really, really, really liked seeing the inclusion of the hillsides as a way to preserve those. I think that meets so many of our goals and does so in a creative way, and hopefully we can get the word out. I think one of the problems we may face with the TDRs is, as much as we look at it and go, oh, we know what a TDR is and a transfer development right, it isn't something very commonly used, and so it would be nice from a kind of communication standpoint, or maybe just a kind of, what's the workflow as a larger project comes in through the permit cycle, that maybe there's a handout or a link that can be sent that says, hey, you want some additional density? Here's one way you can do it. Because I think we've made adjustments to the code, and we've seen it on some of those larger projects like the development agreements, where they've had a really good incentive to get some extra density, and they've had the time with staff to be able to understand what their options are. So, to me, it seems like we may have some questions of kind of communication publicization. And then there was the question from Ms. Lee about what's the difference between extending the current ILA with King County versus the L-clip program? I didn't understand what the difference is between that, so I think I would be interested in exploring it, because I think in general, preserving stuff in King County and particularly preserving stuff in the Issaquah Creek watershed areas, really good, serves many of our needs, but I don't want to make the wrong decision, choice between those if I don't understand what the difference is.
I wondered if we could have a comment on, my understanding was that the administration is recommending that we couple, if we did the ILA, that we would couple the L-clip program with the ILA for King County, is that right? I mean, they don't have to be together, but that that was the recommendation?
Correct, they don't have to be together, and I think from Lakeside's perspective, it's going to take time for the L-clip to be sorted out, so you, you know, the city could just separate them, and, you know, council could decide to just extend the ILA separate from the L-clip, but we felt council needed to know that there is this added benefit to the city from the taxes purposes if we wanted to couple them together.
And obviously, the L-clip can't go alone, or it wouldn't, there wouldn't be any way to use it if we didn't do the ILA. Okay. I thought, yeah, I think we're clear, okay. Do you have any? Council Moray?
Thanks. I agree on the wooded hillside, I think that's a really clever way to fix that problem, and I'm super excited about that. I agree with Council President Walsh on, TDRs are a form of currency, if you will, that can be used in many different ways, and I think having clarity on how TDRs can be spent would be very helpful. And then I was just musing on the fact that if density is one of the things that I can use a TDR for, and what we're doing to promote affordable housing is a density bonus, I wouldn't want us to shoot our affordable housing in the foot with a TDR. So, we've got to figure a way to balance that out so that we don't undermine the incentives around density, because we're using TDRs in that area. I would be very interested to know what the development rights remaining in the Issaquah Creek Basin are, so what is it that we would be potentially looking at there? Because if it's a small number, maybe we don't need the ILA. I'm very interested in the L-clip program, if we're going to be looking at expanding TDRs, because I think with additional growth and additional density do come additional costs for infrastructure, and having assistance in defraying some of those infrastructure costs would be very positive. So, not certain that I'm super psyched about the ILA focused on Issaquah Creek without L-clip.
Okay, thank you. One clarifying question, can you explain the issue or potential concern around using the TDR funds for administrative purposes?
Yeah, so the code says, you know, up to 5% of the TDR funds can be used for administration. I think the thought was to run this program, there's some administration costs, and how to use the funds for, to offset that. And the comment from the Planning Policy Commission was they felt like most of that money should be spent for preservation rather than administration of the program.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think, I think that seems like, 5% seems like a small but reasonable, you know, it's up to 5%, seems like a small but reasonable percentage. It would be nice to know if that's standard, though, because for a very large project, is 5% really reasonable for administration? So, I guess I would just, it might be helpful to compare against other TDR programs, but just for our future information. So, as far as the Issaquah Creek and the ILA and then L-clip, I am intrigued by the possibility of preserving that, those conservation areas on Issaquah Creek, although they're outside of Issaquah, it does feed into our portion of the Issaquah Creek, and then, you know, which goes out to Lake Sumamish, and of course, none of those boundaries matter to wildlife, or to salmon, and for habitat quality, and so, you know, the quality of the water coming down that stream is ultimately what matters. So, we will benefit from conservation of the creek outside of our city as well. So, I like that idea, I also like the L-clip program, and I think the point Council Member Ray made was a good one about just making, just getting more information about what is the potential there, as far as what are those undeveloped areas that would be eligible to become sending sites if we were to enter into the ILA. And then I did remember one other question I had, you mentioned that the map and the map and the code were not aligned for sending sites and receiving sites, and that it was, the difference was in the community facilities. So, are the community facilities just going to be changed so that they are receiving sites?
Yeah, that's what we're thinking, so, you know, we do things slightly differently, so if there's a park acquisition, it's zone, whatever the underlying zoning is, single-family estates, you know, whatever the, or single-family small lot, and then once the city acquires it, we rezone it to say, community facilities, open space, or community facilities, you know, we have like five different, or seven different types of CF zones. So, it becomes, if they're designated as park space, you know, as sending sites, and then you've now rezoned them to a thing that can't be allowed, so our intention here is to change the text, keep the map, be the visual that explains which you're sending and which you're receiving, but take out the portion that prohibits some of those zone properties to be considered sending sites. But we'll work with legal to kind of figure out a path there.
Okay, great, thank you. Council President Walsh?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in on the ILA. With the information that you've provided about the difference between just extending versus the L-clip, I'm definitely in favor of the L-clip program for the tax benefits that it would provide us in order to add any infrastructure, so I would fall on that side of that idea. Thanks.
Okay, I think we're all pretty much in agreement. Did you get a consensus from that conversation about?
Yeah.
Next steps? Okay, great. Then the next one is regarding landmarks and archaeological resources?
Yeah.
I agree, I think this is very clear. The one thing I had flagged was, I also sat in on the PPC meeting on these topics, and I thought the points about the commission member for the Landmarks Commission, that three years you wouldn't really get acclimated and everything, I think that made a lot of sense, so that could be looked at and just made to be more flexible, I think, but other than that, I think it's good. Okay, and then the last section is parking. Council President Walsh?
Okay, so, I think in general, the parking code is going to need another touch, just to understand what, whether we are achieving what we intended to achieve. So, if the question is, is this ready to move on, my answer is no. I think we need more information, more data on that. Other areas within that, I actually don't support the changes that are proposed related to the EV Ready and EVSE. I appreciate the staff is pushing forward on this based on the sustainability ideas, but we just made that policy decision on council, and we got some pushback. We had questions whether it was financially feasible and whether it would hurt development, and so looking at the proposal here to potentially double that without having a policy conversation on the financial ramifications, I think is not where we as on the financial ramifications, I think is not where we as council intended to move forward on that, so I wouldn't support that area. I appreciated the presentation of the conversations with the affinity groups on the parking, including the off-street parking maximums versus minimums and all of the conversations about maybe we should just eliminate minimums in certain areas. I really like those as concepts, I appreciate that we eliminated the minimums for ADUs, though now hearing that it was a state requirement, I'm not as gung ho like, way to go Issaquah, moving forward on some of these areas where we can. I would like to do more of that and I think we, seeing that you've had affinity group conversations, says, hey, we're already moving forward on that. I, you know, I know this goes a little bit into the next point, but I think that's one I'm not really ready to shift on to a future discussions whiteboard list, given we've already started those conversations, I don't want to lose those ideas. I think also, given that there were a lot of changes made to the bike parking code based on PPC's conversation, or discussions there, I mean, I think it's good that we're looking at making some changes there, but I really struggle when the administration then comes back and says, oh, but we can't talk about vehicle parking requirements because it's too new. And so, I'm having a hard time mixing those two when we didn't really put anything in there about bike parking as a big change that we wanted to accomplish, but we did about parking. So, I guess, again, this also goes into that future conversation, but what I'm looking for then is not only an understanding of, does this get us, how does this move the needle from the current code, but also, are we making the appropriate changes to achieve goal two, which was, hey, let's use our land use well, let's do it in a way knowing that these things that are going to be built are going to be there for the next 50 years? So, I have concerns. I appreciate that we've moved to a tier one, tier two concept, I think that's the right direction, I just don't yet know where the numbers come down as far as achieving our goal. So, thanks.
Councilmember Ray?
Thanks. I'm just going to opine on one area and that's, I was also struck with the EV parking regs and particularly the substantial improvements, the last two bullets and the increases there. I guess I could get behind the new townhomes and new multifamilies because I think that makes sense, but to Council President's comment, we got a fair amount of pushback from the community over these regs when we put them together and I was, was and am very supportive of them, but I wouldn't want to make any changes now particularly without doing a fairly extensive outreach to the business community.
All right, thank you. So, on the EV parking, I'll start there. From the PPC conversation, there were many opinions on it and one of the opinions was that this should be reviewed after a couple of years and not, not so fast after the other changes had been made. So, I do think that would be prudent just to see more projects come through the pipeline with the existing regulations and make sure that it's working as expected. I think, I too, as far as the EV Ready, most people do prefer to charge their car at their residence, so, you know, if we can for new residences, townhomes, multifamily, if we can make sure that we're right sizing EV readiness for that, especially given that these buildings will be there for 50 years, I think that would be, that would be good. As far as the EV, the EV for non-residential and the EVSE, I think it would be good to give our current code some time and make sure that it's, it is right sized for our community at this point, so. And that, that was in the mix of opinions from PPC, there was, there was also some support for the EV Ready, less so for the EVSE, given technology changes and things like that. Okay, so then, other comments on the bike parking, generally I heard from PPC and I agree that it should be pretty flexible to make sure that, that buildings are designed with this in mind, but that they can do it, that they can put in this bike parking however works best for them, so I generally am on board with that. And then, also generally agree that it's hard to know if we're making our, if we're increasing parking requirements because there's not a, not an apples to apples comparison with this code. I'm very concerned that we, you know, we have this vision for especially Central Issaquah where we don't have these big parking lots and that we are using our space more efficiently, making more pedestrian oriented spaces, making spaces that are more inviting for people to get out of their cars and walk around. And so, I think it's, it's hard to know how much that this changes, I don't think it changes very much also, but I think generally it would be good to look at our parking requirements and then look at the vision we have for Central Issaquah and then, how can we adjust our parking requirements accordingly, which I think direction wise is reducing the minimum or, you know, putting a maximum and just having less parking. So, that's, those are my thoughts on that and I think we basically need more information. I also generally agree that of the different topics, this was the one that it was particularly hard to evaluate against the goals. All right, so, that concludes this item unless there are any questions that you have for our committee?
No, I think it's clear. One question I have on the parking, I think there's the general desire to have a comparison of what's changed, increased, decreased, peer city research, where do we stand by the number of units, you know, one bedroom versus two bedroom, how does multifamily stack up? So, we can, we can come back to the committee with that information. The EV, I think there's generally consensus to not change the remodel and all that, but general support for multifamily. Okay, the townhomes, we do need to fix it because right now we have a percentage and it's not a multifamily townhome, you either have it or you don't, so I think that's a flaw in our existing code that we, we need to fix that. Any other questions on parking?
So, I just wanted to clarify, what, one of the things that I'm looking for in being able to evaluate and understand what the proposed code is for parking related to the existing code is to use some example projects. And so, if you're looking at, say, Target as an example, Target is X number of gross floor area and with the current code, or whatever code they were developed under, had this many spaces required. If they were to develop the same project with new code and they're in tier one versus tier two, what are their minimums, what are their maximums? So, that we can really look at it in, in a way that, you know, I'm not saying draw the target and show what the scale of it would be, but just so that we can relate it to some specific projects and understand how the numbers come back and forth. And again, particularly on some of those areas where it used to be number of employees or number of, I think it was bowling lanes on one of them or, you know, something like that. Bowling lanes probably isn't a good example because we don't have any previous projects that you could look at, but some of those areas so that we can really get a sense of what the proposed change has as an effect. Thanks.
Sure, yeah, and one of the things, you know, in the consolidation part was the size of the stalls, right? So, we had two different standards, one in central and one outside of central, so we've merged them and kind of, so there is some efficient use of land that comes from, you know, how wide your drive aisle width needs to be and all angled parking versus 90-degree parking, so we fixed some of those as well with this update, just so, that's on the table. The comparison with the ITE, you know, at one point we had had a discussion with PPC, Stephen, I think it was before perhaps, your conversation with the affinity groups was King County has a right sized parking model where they have built in sort of their, you know, the market demand close to proximity and you can plug in your address and things and it spits out a number. So, as we do this research and give you this analysis, we can kind of throw that one in there too, that, you know, based on King County's right sized parking model, this is the number that they come up with. So, you'll have more holistic picture of, here we are, here's the proposed draft, here's the peer city research and here's ITE manual and versus the other one, so we'll work on that comparison to show you.
Your comment about the stall size and the aisles reminded me, one of the things that I've appreciated about the development in, of the retail in the Highlands is that pretty much all the time, most of the spaces are used up, it seems right sized and I'm sure there are some people in the community who see that and go, gosh, there's no parking, but understanding what those requirements, maybe taking some of the developments in that retail space there and using that would be really helpful from my mind because there's a big difference in the parking requirements in the Grand Ridge Plaza versus the parking requirements in a Target as a box store. And then, the other thing is some of our newer parking lots that have requirements for trees and also pedestrian walk zones, that isn't in this parking area, is that in landscaping instead?
To have, you know, how do, how do you have pedestrian connections from your parking, surface parking lot to your building entrance?
Yeah.
We'll take a look, I think it's in the site design manual.
Okay.
So, we have a building design and we have a site layout and design, that's my understanding, it's in the site design manual.
That's correct, it's in the site designer draft code.
Okay, because that would be the other thing that comes up for me on parking is, I really love a good parking lot that thinks of me as a human who has to walk and doesn't want to walk behind a bunch of cars and potentially be hit, so. The more we can do more of that, the better city we will be. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. I did just want to add one, one more reason to support the EV Ready for multifamily, which had came up in our previous conversations, but I'll just restate for the record is that also, when you don't have the ability to charge at your home, then that can become a barrier to having that kind of vehicle and for multifamily, they won't have the ability to do that remodel themselves and so, it's especially important for, for them for that equity component. So, again, support that and then think we need more data about how the non-residential piece is working. All right, I think, I think with that, we are concluded on this topic, so we will move on to our second and final item, which is ID 1224 Title 18 Land Use Code Future Updates List, also known as the whiteboard, and this will also be presented by Director Dollywall.
I'll go ahead and share my screen again. So, for this topic, you know, we, we have been, the purpose of the whiteboard or the future?
We put it in full screen, sorry.
So, this future updates list, what is it and how did it come about and what's the process? So, in summary, as we started having these conversations with the community members, with the Planning and Policy Commission and various boards and commissions, there were some topics that were good conversations, but they were outside the scope of the current Title 18 update, but we didn't want to lose them, so we started adding them to this list. It's evolved in terms of the name of this list from a parking lot to a bike barn to a whiteboard, I think we landed with a whiteboard, but, so that anyone who's not cued into this conversation, doesn't know what we're talking about, we're now calling it future updates list in parentheses, whiteboard. And so, what we gave you is based on each of those six larger categories of how we're doing this update and in the, in your packet is a detailed list. I think what we heard from the last time when we gave you a bullet point list was, put it in the format of goals, outcomes, what is your intent and, and is it covered under the existing goals and outcomes chart? So, we've taken that and revised the list, that's in your packet. The two questions we received from council members were, which out of these items is actually implementing the Central Issaquah Plan? So, I'll go over that in my, this list, it's just the, the list and then the ones that are in blue are the ones that have, are somewhat related to the Central Issaquah Plan. Now, obviously, we've implemented the Central Issaquah Plan by already the things that are in the code. With this update, we've codified few things in the plan that were only mentioned tangentially as applicable code requirements, for instance, developer obligations are in the plan, but now we're embedding it in the code, but other densities, requirements and those, all of those have already been implemented in Title 18 code. But the, the stuff from this white, the future updates, the things that are actually mentioned in the Central Issaquah Plan, we've, you know, in this presentation, we've highlighted them in blue and included in parentheses where it's mentioned, whether it's a vision statement, whether it's an actual policy or, or not. So, that was one question, so let's go through this list. The first topic was natural environments and those are the, the three things, then we had the landscape and open space, we've put in urban forestry program, while it's not a Title 18 update, but I think it was a big enough conversation that we've added it here. And the other ones are all, the third item here is for building and design, or zoning and uses, I'm sorry, that talked about some of the, you know, are these kind of uses allowed in residential zones, can we prohibit self-storage facilities, can, what can we do about impervious surface limits? And then, of course, school siting and compact school design and, and emergency shelters and transitional housing, this is a state law requirement that we're going to have conversations with the comprehensive plan update because there's requirements that need to go in the housing element, but there'll be some code changes occurring as part of that. This slide shows bucket four, which is building and design. There are things that came up during these conversations, view shed study, wayfinding, you know, how do we make things connected? And this last item, you know, I didn't put it in blue because it's not really implementing an existing Central Issaquah Plan, but it's really looking at form-based code in lieu of the strict architectural style and maybe there's an overlap with missing middle in Central Issaquah and using form-based code to regulate that. So, so there's that and then, of course, the topics that we talked about today, interlocal, you know, the, the parking and all that, so I won't go into the details of that. The second question we had from the council member was, how do land use policies affect transit development? And really, our master mobility plan and Title 18, there are a lot of things in Title 18 which we've kind of taken from the master mobility plan, from the park strategic plan and, you know, like we shared in the community facilities chapter where we are showing where these connections are, where's the Mountain Sun Greenway Trust, if you're developing property next to it, you need to improve it based on this, where are the trail connections? So, all of that, we're folding in Title 18. There are other things like landscaping and build form, so the kind of densities we allow, the kind of development, you know, close to transit, we allow, you know, more dense development, so that's the interplay between land use policies and transit planning. Now, of course, there's a piece called City Street Standards, which we're all Standards, which we're also working on, and Stephen can speak more about the details of that, and it'll be going to the TAB Transportation Committees as well. But basically, we're trying to create detailed street typologies in central is equal. So we know where the bike facilities are going to be, where the pedestrian and transit connections. So if you get private development, we know exactly what the street cross-section should be or should look like in that area. And lastly, thank you, Council, for funding transit study. We are, we've launched that. We had a successful R F P, and we have a consultant on board that's started work on that. So a lot of the implementation of master mobility plan and the C I P and T I P is going to get addressed through that work. So I think that answers the second council question. But really, for the future updates list, we're asking the committees input on, did you see anything that was glaringly missing from this list? And then, do you, you know, did we incorporate all the things you asked us in the format? Is it good to go to council on August eighth? Or do you, are you looking for any changes there? So council can decide which ones to prioritize from the list.
Does that conclude your presentation?
That does.
Great. Thank you. Council President Walsh.
Great. First of all, really appreciate the additional columns and the ability to really look through this and understand what the administration has in mind as far as potential actions and all of that. So with that additional information, I generally agree with most of the items continuing on the future updates list and going to council for that approval. Even some of those that have a relationship to the goals and outcomes chart, because there's good explanation from like, hey, we did area X, Y, and Z, and then the other stuff is going to come with the happy grant. So I appreciate that. There were three exceptions and then two additions that I have. So things that I think should come off of the future updates list are number twenty-four, the parking minimum and maximums. So I think, given that we've already started the conversations with the affinity groups, and they provided feedback, we really should utilize that instead of waiting. I think this is an important one. The community has asked for it. I think we can potentially get a lot more development on that. So I think that is one that we should talk about now. Number, the next one is number thirty, the transit access parking and whether we should potentially reduce parking requirements if they're near transit. I think this is one that doesn't really require community engagement. You've mentioned in the action, it just requires research into our peer cities, and so I think it should be included. I think that, from my standpoint, is kind of one of those in the gaps analysis is, hey, let's see what everybody else is doing. If somebody has a good set of code, let's see if we can plug that in rather than delay that. And then, similarly, number twenty on the missing middle housing diversity, I think there's a lot there. But one piece that I think should be included here and not put on a future updates list is the peer city research. I think if there are some good things that we're seeing with peer cities that they've implemented, we can potentially make some movement here without having to have the full conversation about, hey, is single-family zoning right for all areas of our city? So I think I'd like to see the peer city research and see if there are some things here with the missing middle housing diversity that we could implement within Title eighteen. So those are the three things that I don't think should necessarily remain on the future updates list. And then I have two things that are additions. Yes?
So by removing it from the list means what then? Because it sounds like you're interested in all three, but you don't want them on this list. So you want to remove them and put them where?
In Title eighteen update, that we are doing right now.
Okay. So I think, just so we're all clear, that that would be the direction?
That's my direction.
Okay.
I'll see what everybody else is saying.
This conversation is extraordinarily important.
Yes.
Because we need to get this all ducks in a row, so to speak, so that if there is additional work that you're looking for now with Title eighteen, now that we're nearly done with this phase, that's an impact on staff for that additional work versus additional work that would be after Title eighteen. So I hope I'm not overstating this, but I think it's really, because we're going to talk about this again Monday night with the full council. Chair Hunt would be very helpful to, before we leave tonight, if we can make those distinctions versus taking them off the list because you don't want them on the list. So that's a different place for taking them off the list. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I wondered if you could clarify, too, because I think it was, it was not complete, as I understood it, wasn't complete items in some cases. Like you said, the peer city research element of one item on the list. And so if you could either restate it, or maybe we could also email it. But just so we were clear on which elements of which items you're actually proposing to remove.
Yeah. So just to clarify, number twenty-four, the parking minimum maximum, I think we just need to have that conversation with P P C based on what the affinity groups had provided and come to a decision about whether we should just be using maximums or whether we should continue using off-site parking minimums. And so having that conversation as it relates to residential and commercial uses, I think, is the next step there. With number thirty, related to the transit access parking, the action listed was do the peer city research. And so I would propose that we do that peer city research and have an understanding, is there something there that we could adopt and implement in our code? Similarly, number twenty really is, missing middle housing is a huge, huge issue. So the only thing that I would pull off of the future updates list into Title eighteen is the peer city research. And then if, based on that, it needs to go back to P P C, great. Yeah. That one's a little bit tricky because there's a lot related to missing middle housing. I am not, at this point, proposing that we have the conversation about single-family zoning. But if there are things that other cities have done that we could effectively implement in our code, I think now is the time rather than waiting on that.
Okay. So I'm going to read back, and you can correct me if this is wrong. So your proposal is for item twenty-four, which is the parking minimum and maximums, that that whole thing be accomplished within the Title eighteen update. Then peer city research for missing middle and transit access parking, which is twenty and thirty on the update. Okay.
Chair Hunt, may I, can the clerk ask a question?
Yes.
Have we moved into committee recommendation at this stage?
Hmm.
We seem to have skipped over the public comment. And we do have a member of the public present virtually, and I just want to make sure that they have the opportunity to either make public comment or not.
Great. Thank you. Yes, I think because we didn't have many or any questions on this section, we moved. So thank you very much for that, for catching that. So at this time, and apologies, I will call for a public comment, and I'll check in with the city clerk if anybody's indicating a desire to speak on this topic.
Thank you, Chair Hunt. I don't see a desire on the part of the public attending to speak to this topic.
Okay. And I will note also, for the record, that there is still nobody in council chambers to make a comment in person. Okay. So we will now resume the deliberations on this topic. All right. Did you have any additional thoughts?
I have two additions to the future updates list. Is now a good time for that?
Yes. So my thought is we can get all the changes, my, and we can discuss, but my thought is we could get all the changes on the table and kind of talk through that. And then we could talk about the policy or the, if we have process recommendations, we could then talk about that. And then check in with the administration if they have what they need to prepare for the council's full consideration on Monday night. Okay. So yeah, so I think then we'll just sort of get any changes on the table and then discuss.
Okay. Great. So the two additions that I think need to be added to the future updates list. So looking back at the goals and outcome chart, we have goal number five related to construction notices. So I guess my first question is, I don't think we've talked about that yet. Is that in this last section of Title eighteen?
So public notices, yeah. They're in the procedure section. And so we have some amendments to that section coming up.
Great. Then assuming that is handled, that doesn't need to be added to the future updates. So there's one off. But the thing, the other thing that I think needs to be added is single-family zoning. So I know during the last meeting, we talked about potentially adding that to the future updates list. And I'm seeing missing middle on that, but I'm not seeing specifically that conversation about single-family zoning. So I request that that get added in.
And the conversation would be around changing existing single-family zoning to allowing for multifamily and other forms of housing?
Yeah. What our city wants, because I don't, we haven't had that conversation, and I certainly wouldn't want to put it into Title eighteen right now. But I think even separate from the idea of what are the administration's proposed changes to achieve missing middle, I want to make sure that we are at least having that conversation about should single-family zoning be allowed to be duplexes, et cetera?
Okay. All right. So we ended up with, then, one proposed addition, which is this conversation. Okay, great. Councilmember Ray, did you have any changes, recommendations?
I actually just have a question. And it really deals with line twenty-five, which is increase the E V requirements for new and existing developments. Did we not kind of address that one tonight or set ourselves on the path to address that one?
That one's more in response to public comments of reviewing the E V in the future in every few years.
Okay. So that's sort of a long-term placeholder?
Correct.
Great. I don't have any adds or deletes. But before I give up the mic, the second question is some process-related things, and I do have some thoughts here. Do you want to do those separately? Does the list contain the information we need to sort? So are we just doing question one, which is the adds and deletes right now?
I think that's the, that's, yeah, that's it. Okay, great. Okay. So I, going into this, didn't have adds or deletes. However, I do think the missing middle item on there, I'm wondering if we could sort of expand that to capture this idea of the single-family zoning conversation, as well as other tools that we could use. Because I know, and I don't know enough about this, but I've read that some cities that have replaced the single-family zoning with zoning that allows other housing types, if it's already completely built out, that's, that in itself isn't going to make that change. And so I think it would be good to kind of take a step back for that conversation and really think about what, what do we need? From my perspective, we had that housing strategy, which was done prior to my time on council, and it identified that a number of families at that time were, were single individuals or couples, and that they would prefer to have a smaller unit, a smaller housing, more modest housing situation than what was currently on the market. So there was a mismatch between the kinds of housing that people would prefer to have and that would be more affordable to them and what was on the market. And so I think just looking at from that bigger perspective, what could we do to better match, better match the community's needs for certain kinds of housing versus our housing stock, I think that would, that would be great. It's a bigger conversation, and the single-family zoning could be in there. But I, you know, I wonder if there could be other tools, other things that we should look at as well. So that would be my suggestion on that one. I think it's a big conversation. I think it's, it's important to make the changes that we, we have made. I thought P P C had a really good conversation about the zero lot lines, for example, and about allowing housing to be built on, you know, the importance of allowing housing in some instances to be built on those smaller lots, which the zero lot line changes would make. And so I think we've, we've taken some steps in that direction, but we clearly need to go further. So that would be my, my suggestion on that. But then, other than that, I didn't have any other additions or remove, removal items. So on, Council President, on your list, I think the one that is the real work item is the parking one, because the other two are comparisons with peer cities. And I think that that's a smaller lift than having the whole conversation about the parking and then also making changes within this current Title eighteen update. Was that, does the administration agree with that assessment?
So from Council President Walsh's list, so number twenty-four, you know, the parking minimum maximum, peer city research, I think we can do that and bring it back to you. The question is going to be what we find from there. There's not going to be this easy solution, but, but that's something we can bring back, some research for you to evaluate. I think our recommendation would be to not take anything out of the list for now, but we continue to work and give you the information that we talked about in parking. You had a, you know, a lot of things that would be helpful. So we can do one check-in with the committee on parking and some pending items. And number twenty-four, the minimum maximum piece, and kind of get into some more details about that topic with you. And then I think number thirty was also research into peer cities. So why don't we bring that back to you? But we don't recommend that we take that off the list because, based on our conversations, these are difficult things to really put it in this code. And peer city research is going to give us one idea and what others are doing. Some of them may be lagging behind. We may be ahead of them. So our recommendation would be to leave them on the list. We give, come back with some additional information on parking items. On the missing middle, you know, it's going to need a comprehensive plan amendments, it's going to need policy change. It's not just a regulation update in Title eighteen. So, and what we've said before is that needs to be a thoughtful communications with the community members in different neighborhoods and all that. So that one, we feel strongly should be on the whiteboard list because there's a complexity of everything in Title eighteen to try and fold that in with Title eighteen. One of the things, I think, in terms of making it clear that what this includes, I think in the intent section, we said housing diversity goals and to evaluate single-family housing zones to expand single families. So I think that's covered in there in terms of what changes need to be made. So in short, we leave the number twenty-four and thirty there, but we do a check-in with the committee with this peer city research, and then you can decide if there's anything in this, in this Title eighteen update that we can fold in, or we put it, you know, we continue to work towards it until we get it right. One of the things we heard loud and clear, even in the very beginning, when we started, you know, having these conversations with the community members, was when you have a large parking lot, you know, next to an apartment building, there's going to be that overflow parking. And so the commercial property owners felt by going to maximum parking and really having no minimum parking stall, if someone could say, I'm not going to build, you know, a developer's not going to build any parking, what's that impact to the neighboring property owner? So it's complex. It works for really urban cities. It's the chicken and the egg. We don't have the transit yet. People still rely on cars. So the timing of it is interesting. And, but we're committed to giving you all more information, comparisons... And, but we're committed to giving you all more information, comparison, pure city research. But what, what you all do with that, I think is going to be, need to be thoughtful. So that's our recommendation, not, you know, given where we're at right now.
Council President Walsh, and I, I was just going to clarify. I think the orig, the intent of the first item for 24 was to actually have the whole, from your perspective, was to have the whole conversation, not to do the pure cities research. That's the parking one. The other two, item 30, which is the transit access parking, and then 20, which is the missing middle, those were to do only the pure city research. But for 24, you're, which is parking, you were proposing to do the entire item within the current update.
That was my recommendation. Given that we have already started the conversation and had multiple meetings with the affinity groups, I see the next step there being taking that topic to PPC. And in pulling together a proposal for should we have parking minimums and maximums and what that should be, obviously you would do some pure city research, but it's more of having a full and comprehensive conversation about it. I think you've given me a lot to think about. I think I will pull back the idea of single-family zoning and recognize that that already is within number 20, the missing middle housing diversity. I would like to hear from my fellow committee members on how they feel about the 24, 30, and 20. Because you have given some comments on how difficult these are.
Councilmember Ray?
Thanks. I'm trying to be cognizant of the goal of the Title 18 project, which is to, you know, how much, how much work can we get done within a fixed amount of time? It's sort of a, kind of a, you know, that kind of idea of I got scope and I got time and I got money and two of them, two of them are fixed. And, and we have fixed, you know, scope and time. And so if, and so my only concern really with kind of expanding scope is if you don't expand time and our resources are, are fixed, then, then quality is going to go down. So I think if we, if, if we really are at maximum capacity right now to drive towards the end of the year to, to complete this phase of Title 18 updates, then I would like to keep the scope kind of where it is. And as much as I think that that's a good thing to do, I, I don't know that it would matter. I just want to get this wrapped up by the end of the year because we have been talking about this for way too many years, right? So let's, let's, you know, let's get to done. And, and I, I keep looking at this like this is a product backlog and we've got all sorts of work we need to do. And there's, there's, there's another release coming of Title 18. And then there's another release of Title 18. So we could prioritize some of these at the beginning of that next release. And, and they don't have to be annual updates. Maybe we, we make, we may make deposits every quarter instead of once a year. But I, I just want to get done with this, this particular iteration of the update. And, and so I'm inclined to say, let's, let's not kind of pull any new scope in.
Okay. So for me, I think that requesting an earlier pure city review for, for things that, that does make sense to me. I think it sort of tees up those conversations and, and really these are important items. This isn't a list of things that we can, you know, we, we are putting on this list because we feel we can get to them later. It's really because of the capacity issue that you mentioned. So I think, I think that seems hopefully doable and I'm supportive. On the, the parking conversation, I would like to see the information that we requested come back because I think if we can confirm that we're moving in the right direction with the existing updates, I would be, I think, satisfied with that for now. And then with the bigger conversations for the next part to take a more comprehensive, bigger step at improving further. So strategically, I think that would make sense. And that would also better address the concerns that have been voiced by the administration about adding anything to the current, you know, sort of re-scoped version of the existing update. That said, I do want to have that information come back so that we can make sure that the current changes are, are moving us in the right direction and not, and, and then I think that, that would be adequate for me. And then on the missing middle one, there's a column, it's actually labeled column one on the thing, but I think it's probably like the title of the item.
Okay.
So it's like the bucket, draft section, task, column one, incentive task. I'm, that column I think should be the title. But I think, I think what I would propose is if you look at that item, it has a lot of things other than missing middle. It has affordable housing. It has looking at the condo regulations. It has basically everything that's in the happy grant, which is based on our housing strategy. So I think if we, if we just kind of make that clear, that that is a comprehensive look at all these items in the housing strategy work plan. It's really to try to realign our housing stock best we can with our tools as a city. And the market will also play a big factor, but you know, how, taking the steps we can to address the housing needs of our community through the tools that we have as a city, using the housing strategy as a, a guide. I think that might be the way to go. So I would rename that one on that column one to be something other, something more like align code with the housing strategy. And then, and it kind of all is, it's all in there. Council President Walsh?
Yeah, so I appreciate having this conversation. The reason that I pulled these particular items out is because they match up with our goals and outcomes chart. And so I, I wanted to at least call out that, hey, when we initially created the scope of this project, we said it was going to include parking and we said it was going to include missing middle housing. So I don't feel like this is adding to the scope necessarily. That being said, I also want to get things done. And these are really complex problems. So I'm willing to leave them on the future updates list with the recommended changes that you had. But I think this kind of naturally leads into that second part of the process question, which is, and what do we do with this? And how do we decide on budget? So, yeah, because there isn't anything here that really helps me in that budget conversation. So I guess my first question would be to the administration, what do you think we would do with this at budget time?
Well, we're hoping to short-circuit that conversation by tonight's conversation, Monday's conversation, so that we can, you know, get some feedback from the committee. Excuse me, hopefully then, excuse me, sharing that feedback with your colleagues Monday night. And then we can incorporate that into the budget. So, you know, for example, if the missing middle, whatever we, we retitling it, is most important, I mean, it would be useful to know that. Because what we need to do with the budget, of course, is stage the next step. After we have the champagne toasts to Minnie and her team for completing it, the next day, we get to start something new. And so we want to know what that something new should be according to the city council and have whatever staff, consultant resources you might want and what we would need to do what you would like in place to move forward. So I don't think we're here with any particular preferences. I think we've, you know, certainly Minnie and her staff has been working with this list. And as, as PPC has, have our community stakeholders. Everybody feels these things are important. Some have different constituencies. But we want to know what you think is important. And if we can glean that from the committee, get the council's feedback, that will inform our, our budget creation. I mean, we have one-time dollars. We're fortunate to have one-time dollars. Nearly all of us, I think, needs one-time dollars. We have a new planning manager starting when?
August sixteenth.
August sixteenth. So we'll be, I think, fully staffed now in the current planning division. So we'll, we'll know what we can handle, but we would like to know what you would like us to do moving forward.
Councilmember Ray?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, you know, the budget process, I think Wally covered it well. In terms of the periodic update for comprehensive plan that we have to do, so we have to finish that by 2024. And that's going to be, you know, we're done with huge Title 18, but that's another huge thing that, and then of course, the happy grant, the transit study, and the concurrency update. So that's on the work plan for those two years in addition to whatever council decides to pick from this list for the, you know, to fund for, for those two years.
Absolutely. And so if you say, here's four more things you want to do in addition to everything that Minnie just described, then it may be additional staff resources in addition to consultant resources. And then that becomes a larger organizational question on resources, police officers versus more planners.
So what would make me really happy is to get some, some rough level of effort estimates for each of these things. So, because we got, we got large items here and we got super-large items here. So I, I was going to say boulders and pebbles, but I don't think we got any pebbles. I just think we had boulders and bigger boulders. So what, you know, what's the level of effort? And then what's our capacity? That's the other thing we need to know is, you know, tell me, tell me how much effort is going to take to do critical areas relative to our current capacity? Because that'll inform whether or not we need additional resources. And then there's the problem of the mythical man month or the mythical person month, you know? Sometimes it's just not about throwing resources at these problems because you can't ramp up people fast enough. So we've got to figure out what our capacity is to deliver. And then the other thing I would like to do, this isn't necessarily for Monday's conversation, but for an implementation point of view, I'd like to do complete chunks with very discrete boundaries. Like for the next quarter, the next six months, we're just working on this and we're going to get this done. And I think it gets quarters, not six months, so that we can really move stuff forward and get it done. Because I think to some of the issues that Council President Walsh brought up, I mean, these are important. And so let's, like, we're going to do this and we're going to focus on this and we're going to knock this out of the park. And then we're going to move on to the next one, more champagne toast that way, so it's all good. So, so that's, you know, what I'd like. And then, you know, just from my perspective, my two esteemed colleagues have been working on this as part of the ad hoc for a long time. And so we're coming with, with the whiteboard with a lot more momentum than me. And so this is going to be a little bit of, you know, just myself, a little more introduction to the full council than this committee. Because these, these two council members really, you know, you knew the origin, where it came from and how it got put together. I'm running really hard to catch up and, and they're still, you know, sitting at the starting block. So, you know, when we meet on Monday, it takes some time to really introduce this, how it evolved, what it was for, what the purpose of it was, and, and what each of the columns means, particularly column one, which needs a title. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so I, I thought the goals and outcomes chart has always been, throughout this process, has been very helpful. I think it's been helpful to us. I think it's also been helpful to the administration and to the staff that have put in a lot of hard work and into making these code changes. And so I was thinking that firstly, I would prioritize those items here that are most strongly associated with those goals and outcomes chart from this update. Those were scoped into the original Title 18. With time, we learned that, that they probably need more time. And so we've adjusted accordingly, but I think those should be the first ones. And those, the two that are the biggest ones are the missing middle, which we're sort of making even bigger. And then the, although not really, just sort of re-titling, making the title more accurate. And then the parking. So the items that are, that were originally strongly connected to that goals and outcomes chart, I think should be prioritized. And then we can completely finish out that list. And then my thought for council on Monday is these other items, could, we could have a goals and outcomes conversation for this next round and then prioritize using that. So we could probably group these in some sort of meaningful way based on what outcome we would, you know, scope the outcomes that we would want and then prioritize the items that we feel are most important to those outcomes. And some of the goals and outcomes may be similar. You know, we had environmental sort of conservation, protection, forest to hillside type goals. There will probably be a similar one. It's environmental, but it's about noise pollution or, or things like that that could come out of that conversation. I also thought, as in terms of information that would be helpful, I agree that some metric of effort would be helpful. But I also thought connection to existing plans, which it, it does have for some items, if that could be more, more called out in a systematic way, I think that would be good. And I also was thinking about that in terms of the two questions we received from the other council members were basically about connection to other plans, about the CIP and about the master mobility plan specifically with regards to transit. So it, there is that information there for some items. And for some items, it's less clear. But I thought, you know, we could look at the goals and outcomes chart, prioritize those, then prioritize things that are strongly connected to the implementation of other plans because those are also things that we've set out to do and confirmed and all voted on, you know, or past councils have voted on doing those things. And then prioritize the other items according to whatever new or, you know, emerged issues we, we feel are important after that. So that would be my sort of process recommendation. Council President Walsh?
Yeah, I, I like that. I guess I'm thinking ahead to what that budget discussion and deliberation looks like. When we look back at our budget priorities meeting and we say, these were the four or five priorities, how, what does that mean related to this future updates list? Does that mean we wanted to accomplish everything? Does that mean we wanted to make sure we got 50% of it done? So I'm trying to understand what the information is that we would need from the administration in order to figure out what our intention and our scope is related to the pile of money that will be available that we then have to figure out between all of the things that you're presenting, so.
From the administration's standpoint, we want to try to make this as straightforward as we can. And I think the committee is rightfully looking at this as a very broad, from beginning, middle, and end. And I think from the administration's standpoint, we're not thinking that broadly right now. We're thinking we have limited resources in 2023. We will be done with Title 18, if not by the end of calendar '22, certainly first quarter '23. So we'll have nine months more, let's say. What else would the council like to see us work on next? Recognizing that even with nine months, we're not likely to finish it. So if we can get the very top priorities, one or two items, and if it's missing middle and parking, maybe that's enough. And then we go back and decide between now and when you see the budget in September and say, these are the resources we need to begin ramping up those discussions. In the meantime, this committee can revisit this list at whatever point you think is appropriate, either at the conclusion of Title 18, later in this fall, and go through, I think, the process that Council President Walsh just described. Because I think that'd be very useful to, to have that, recognizing that we probably wouldn't move beyond those one or two top priorities until '24 and beyond.
Okay, so I think, so we've had a conversation about the broader, the broader process, which we can bring back to council. And then the administration's ask is that we consider the top priorities. I do think that those that are most connected to the current goals and outcomes so that we can sort of finish out the original intent of that update are the ones that I would single out. So that's missing middle and parking. I, I do think though, if, if we're singling out the ones that are most connected, the other one that is extremely connected is the stream buffers one, which is the first item, so that's item number one. And that is already planned, as far as I know, it's already planned to be done. But I would, I would put that in that, you know, very top tier because that was something that we set out to do with this update. something that we set out to do with this update. Any additional thoughts on that, so that's three, then? Counsel President Walsh?
Yes, I'm trying to look through the list, and I think, gosh, it's so hard to figure out what is related to other plans, but generally, yes, I agree, missing middle and parking are the two that are most related to the goals and outcomes chart, I would definitely put the stream buffers as next, I was trying to figure out if I would put urban forestry as a next point, as it relates to ICAP and various other things, but I'm not sure how much that as an idea relates to code versus funding of staff versus et cetera.
And quite honestly, we're sorting through that ourselves, from the administration's perspective, I think as we have talked, there's about $2 million of ongoing additional revenue that we're looking at, and so the needs, as already identified by the council, exceed that $2 million, and so we're trying to prioritize where that is, so I will tell you that, you know, if the if the forestry piece is really important to the council, that's a good thing to know, because that will, I think, guide the administration in its final budget deliberations, and will quite honestly just move it up the priority list.
Thank you, I I how I I think that the urban forestry ideas that have been put forward, a lot of them don't have to do closely with the code, we did, we did update the tree retention code and our tree code, so the next steps, I think, would be an arborist, you know, having more enforcement and figuring out that aspect of things, so that those don't have to do with Title 18, so I don't, and I also want to be cognizant that, you know, this committee is working on a specific question, which is this Title 18 list, and so that's, I don't want to get into like bigger, you know, what we we as a group think about different budget items that are outside of that list, so, because I don't think that would be within our purview, and so that's a strange president, so, yeah, that would be my thought on that one, I think, I think it's super important, I just don't think that this is the place for that conversation, and we're about to have budget conversations where that'll fit better. Okay, so just to recap, we, the items, parking items are 24 and 30, and we think those are our tier, top tier, because they're closely related to the existing goals and outcomes chart, and 20, which is the missing middle, closely related, and one, which is stream buffers, which again, I think is already kind of in the works and planned on being done. Okay, is there any other, yeah, Counsel President Walsh?
I would probably put 29, the parking structure requirements, in with that mix, because I think it makes a difference on affordable housing and parking, and kind of what our parking requirements should be, but I don't know if you guys agree with that as a big part of that next conversation.
Counsel Murray?
Just to clarify, so are we going to bring some recommendations from this committee to the council as a whole on Monday, and saying, here are the four things we think we should move forward with, or are we bringing them the list and a process for them to evaluate, or is it some hybrid of that, because it sounded to me like we were just saying, okay, here's our recommendations to the whole council?
So my my take on this is that we will make a recommendation that is on the process, and then we were requested to have clarity on what, so we, I think, have agreed that a process that prioritizes items that are closely related to the existing goals and outcomes chart, that those those should be prioritized first, and then we we were asked for additional clarity on what we believe those to be, and so now we're just kind of noodling through what those items are, based on our prior conversations and familiarity with the goals and outcomes chart and this table at this point, my thought on the parking is now similar, it's what I said about the missing middle item, which is, can we put an item about parking on there, and then we have 24, which is the minute and the max, and 30, which is the transit access parking, and then there's 29, which is the parking structure requirements, so just all of that together in the big conversation, because it it says that that's not covered by the goals and outcomes chart, but I think it wasn't considered by the goals and outcomes chart, but could be a tool to achieve that goal that was in the goals and outcome chart, so that would be my recommendation for us, is that we kind of say, we're going to have the broader parking conversation, which includes multiple items on the table, and then, again, the housing conversation and streams, we believe those to fit in that top tier because of our recommended process of prioritization. Does that sound? Okay, does the administration, is that clear recommendation, does that give you the information?
Sure, and I and I think, as you just described it, I think your colleagues would appreciate the process that you've just gone through this evening, and so, you know, it's it's sharing that, it's kind of sharing your conclusions, you may not even want to call it a recommendation per se, but, you know, this was how the committee ended up, and perhaps that's where the council begins the discussion from where you ended, so that it's not, if there's any sensitivity to be telling the council what to think, instead, you're simply saying, now please, council, continue the conversation we started, you know, the week prior, my, again, I think as all of you have said in different times, you're all a little bit more focused on this than perhaps your colleagues are, but I think that's what your colleagues have asked you to do by having the standing committee, so we're happy to, you know, make a couple of the changes that were there, we can change the title for missing middle, you know, the agenda for the meeting is going to be out tomorrow, so there's there's not much turnaround, and I think we can simply share that the committee has reviewed this, Chair Hunt will be there to, you know, share where the the committee is at, and maybe we can just say generally, the committee was thinking that they, of these issues, those that, you know, complete the original assignment, complete the goals and outcomes chart, that's sort of the framework, the matrix that the committee was looking at, and we can leave it at that, and then, Council Member Hunt, you're going to be remote, but you will be participating, correct?
Correct.
So you can, I think, take it from there, and your colleagues can further discuss.
Right, and I think that that's all exactly right, I, just to clarify my earlier comments about budget, I just didn't want to get into a into a bigger prioritizing other parts of the budget conversation, which is where I felt we were going with urban forestry, but I I completely agree, we've been tasked with having this conversation by the committee structure, and so I think perfectly comfortable with that scope, and we'll relay this process and this, you know, this conclusion from our committee to the full council on Monday. Counsel President Walsh?
So can I ask the administration, what is the ask from the council on Monday related to this, is it just merely a, we think you're going in the right direction, please then use this to develop some data for the budget, or is it really an adoption of, these are the priorities as far as what staff should be doing, because we usually don't direct staff?
Well, it's also the beauty of committee of the whole, you know, I think your your colleagues can have the discussion, and it can kind of end up wherever it ends up, and that's the reason it's on committee of the whole, not going to the council as a as an action item, you know, I I think under the committee of the whole, it's perfectly appropriate, if you think about committee of the whole budget discussions, the council steers, and so I I think what we're looking for is steering, and in talking with Mayor Polly, she is just anxious to see the seven steer versus just the committee steer, so I think what you've done tonight is great, I think as Council Member Hunts described it, laid out, like that, and however it ends up, it ends up, if it's a firm recommendation, great, if it's, we agree that the parameters should be to complete the goals and outcomes chart, that's fine, I mean, we're all obviously here listening, you know, unless the council veers in a completely different direction, my sense is the administration will take these comments tonight, you know, in the forefront, and then look to see what money we need to put in, and then when you see the budget, the council will have an opportunity then to react to, you know, how we responded.
Okay, thumbs up on that, I did want to reiterate that I think the two pieces of additional information that would be useful to have, and I recognize that the packet is going out tomorrow, some indication of effort, maybe that could be the effort on these top, these items that we are recommending to be top tier, some indication of effort would be useful, I think, and then also some indication, and this could be maybe for subsequent conversations about connections to other adopted plans.
We will not be able to do that in writing for tomorrow.
Yeah.
What we can, we can try to do is be thoughtful over the next couple of days, and at least do our best to address it orally at the meeting Monday night.
Right, and so I think the the plans connection will be useful for future prioritization conversations, so that doesn't need to be in the packet for tomorrow, and I understand that it won't be, and then, yeah, the effort conversation could be, it would just be useful to have that information, especially since.
By Monday evening, we can at least give an order of magnitude, or at least, you know, share some thoughts of what an order of magnitude might be.
High, medium, low, you know, something like that.
I mean, you know, I I only play a planner on television, but, you know, certainly the two topics you picked are broad, wide-ranging topics, but I also know that they're so broad and wide-ranging that there are third-party consultants that we could bring in to do that, and so while we would still need staff to manage that in the midst of all the other projects that Ms. Dolly Wall explained, the these two at least lean, or tend to to lean toward, you know, outside help, perhaps more than a couple of the others you might have picked, so I think that's a preview of what that would be, we'll we'll try to define it a little further over the next few days.
Yeah, I mean, there are some that we have to do in this list, you know, which is the House Bill 1220, so we have to make changes in the housing elements, so that that's just the state law piece, so, but but I think the capacity discussion is real, not just from staff or the consultants, but the boards and commissions, you know, as they have to vet out, really read these complex, you know, policy ideas, and then and make a recommendation to council, so, so just having that balance of, the comprehensive plan update is fair and square in front of us, so if it wasn't for that, then, yeah, we could knock out the whole list, or, you know, whatever, so that's.
She didn't really just say that, so we need to strike that on the record.
But that's an important comprehensive plan update, is a, you know, eight-year update, so we do want to do a good job with having conversations and and giving the time for community and and the boards and commissions to really, you know, do that well, while these are important too, so just as you tee up your conversation with the council, you know, if it's two or three, or however many items you want us to focus on from this list in the next couple of years, keep that, you know, the comprehensive plan update, and and maybe some of these blend in well with the comp plan update, you know, missing middle conversations we might want to have with the community through that process, but maybe it's, it won't be all of it that under that umbrella, maybe it's a slice of it that'll get addressed, so it's going to be nuanced in terms of how it gets implemented, but the budget timing is is critical, and we kind of need to make some decisions for what what's coming from a resource standpoint, or you all need to tell us what the resources are coming away in the next couple of years.
But I think we've heard loud and clear from this committee, from PPC, from residents who've come here, that they don't want this list of future projects to be a black hole, they don't want this list to go away and never to be seen again, so if the council comes up again with, I think you mentioned three tonight, I think we can commit that you will hear about the three, will they be completed in six months, absolutely not, but will there be continued dialogue and discussion about the topics, absolutely, so we're really committed to that, and I think we're just trying to be as honest as possible about about staff resources, about the comp plan, about, you know, current planning projects that may come along, I mean, one of the hopeful outcomes of a better Title 18 is more people will want to come to do business here because they feel that the land use approval process is more straightforward, so that conceivably could mean there's more current projects for all of you to review too, so, again, I think the conversation tonight was excellent, thank you all for for being as precise as you could be with this, and I think your colleagues on Monday will also appreciate it.
Counsel President Walsh?
So the other one that I want to kind of throw out there, because I understand what a form-based code is, but I'm not sure everybody does, and so looking at that number 19, if we're well and truly considering the concept of a form-based code, I would almost say that that needs to come earlier in the process rather than later, just because it has so many ramifications on all kinds of other things, because a form-based code is basically changing from a zoning and use to what it looks like, and so I don't, how do we make that assessment of whether that needs to come earlier rather than later, what the requirements, staff time would be, because I'm I'm trying to think about what that conversation looks like with committee of the whole, in trying to explain what that is?
And I and I think if the question is asked of staff next Monday, we will be brutally honest, and the brutal, honest answer is that we do not have the capacity to deal with this anytime soon, that we need to get Title 18 done, we need to get the comp plan done, we're certainly prepared to work on some of the others, but the idea of a form-based code, I mean, it's pretty much starting all over in some respects, and the amount of energy, time it will take, the development commission, PPC, community stakeholders, our other boards and commissions, is enormous, and so if the council on Monday night says that's the most important thing, and we don't care about the rest, then that will be a very difficult budget conversation, because we will say we have to hire another planning department in order to do that, because the planning department we have will be busy with all the other stuff, I mean, it's not, it's not unlike the munis implementation, where we've had to basically double up on our utility billing folks and our accountants, we will basically come to you and say, we have to double up on our planners, because that is the scope and magnitude of that, and so that, I wish it was a different answer, but that, and Minnie, please correct me if I've misspoke, but I think it would be an enormous, enormous undertaking that we are not in the position to do, certainly not in 2023, and maybe not in 2024.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a, yeah, different people have a different understanding of what it means and and all that, so, and and the scope could be a huge too, but we can start the conversation through the comprehensive plan update process, there's a, could be a little bit overlap between housing, you know, in a, you know, where you have nine units, and it looks like a house on the outside, but it's zone multifamily, and what does that look like, but if you, you know, so having those conversations teed up during the comp plan update will led, lead us to some code amendments in the future years, but it's it's a policy discussion, I mean, right now, we have architectural style, you pick out of the five styles and you, you know, go through that process, so, yes, and that took years of community conversations and 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 all that to get us there, so yes, it is a bigger project, but it's also, what do we want to do, do we want to just try it for missing middle in this zone in Central Issaquah and and test it out, that, you know, maybe that's doable in the next five years, not a whole redo of Central Issaquah plan, so it it can vary, but, yeah, it could be huge, it could be small.
And to say, I I'm not advocating for it, I'm just looking at this list and going, what what is the conversation look like on Monday, and because that has ramifications on everything else, is that something the administration would necessarily propose going first?
And again, I I truly believe that your colleagues were very excited about going to standing committees, and one of the main reasons for that was to use the expertise of the of the colleagues on the committee to help the council sort through these more difficult decisions, and I think Monday night's conversation on this topic will be exhibit A, as to why people are happy that there are standing committees, and we'll listen closely to what this committee has to say on the subject.
Two comments, one is on the form-based code, and one is separate, so on the on the form-based code, this is. So on the, on the form-based code, this is from, you know, having previously worked at the University of Washington Urban Design and Planning Department, but also it came up in the PPC discussions. You know, these codes won't, it's not like we're making the perfect code and then it's going to be applied to a city that will then, you know, use that code from a blank slate. We're starting with an existing city that's built in an existing way. And then we're also starting with an existing code. So while I, I think it ideally, in an ideal, you know, starting from a blank slate situation, you would consider, do you, you know, you would have a decision tree, would you want to do form-based code? Do you want to do this other kind of code? Then you would decide that, then you would make all the other decisions. That's not where we are. We're not at that starting point. We're somewhere quite a ways down that list. And so I think, given that, and given also that this wasn't in our initial scope for the update and given that it isn't, that I think there are ways to achieve the community's goals, given that we have this existing code, given that we have a certain amount of staff capacity, I think we can achieve them more efficiently within the existing code. So I, I agree with this sort of, you know, shouldn't we have, shouldn't this big picture thing be considered first? But I, I, we're just not at that point in the conversation, in my opinion. Unrelated to that, on the requirement, you know, you mentioned some items will be required to be done. That was also true with the original Title 18 update. Those items got pulled to the side. For example, the sign code needed to be done to comply with, I believe, a case.
First amendment.
Yeah. So it, it needed to be done, there was a timeline on that, and so it got done. So I, I would say, I think that we, as a committee, we as a council can also acknowledge that there are items that will be required to be done. But I, I don't, you know, aside from acknowledging that they need to be done, that affects the capacity of staff, I don't know that we need to prioritize them further because they, they do need to be done and we, we recognize that. But yeah. All right. Do you have what you need from this committee?
Yeah, I think.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just to summarize, for the packet for council, we're going to, you know, provide them the information that we have. We'll see if we can add a call, the change, the housing middle, missing middle to a more broader category. I think we have a column that talks about whether it's covered by the existing goals and outcomes. We'll pull that out more strongly. Relationship to other long-range plans, we'll see if that's, you know, makes sense. The metric of effort, we'll cover that in our presentation on Monday. And then we'll summarize, we'll, we'll provide a little bit more context for what is it? How did it come about for the rest of the council members? So that, those are the elements we'll include in the packet. And then you'll lead the discussion with your, the rest of the council members.
Yeah, I think that, that all sounds good. And I would say, I don't think we, I think it's most, it will be most important and most useful to the council's discussion to have an effort metric associated with those three things that we repeatedly mentioned, which were the parking, the housing and the stream buffers. Because if we're, if we're recommending those for council's full consideration, those are the ones that the effort metric would be, would be most useful for. There are a lot of other things on this list. I think there's, you know, 32 things on this list. And so I think, I think it would be a big lift to have all of that information for Monday. But I think having some more detailed information about those items that this committee is recommending to prioritize would be super helpful.
Sounds good.
Okay. Is there any other questions, thoughts from administration? Okay, and so you have what you need from this committee? All right, I will then close out this item and we will move into announcements. Are there any announcements from the committee? There are not. And then there being no further business, I will adjourn this meeting at 9:24 PM. Thank you, everyone.